January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty. Would the City Council be called to order? Would you please stand? We pledge allegiance and hold them in silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Oh, you're going to swear as a councilman?
We have the rest, hold on, Adams, right here. All right, I guess we'll just got to go down the line. It's our...
You're not going to read it to make them swear?
Read it, swear.
Repeat after me. Read it.
Repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Do you state your name?
William Willock.
Bullets is due.
Chuck Starks.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties?
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member for Edwardville, Kansas?
Of council member of Edwardville, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yeah. Congratulations.
Aye.
Aye. Charles Adams.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties?
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member for Edwardville, Kansas?
Of council member for Edwardville, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Aye.
Aye. Gervin Malat.
Do solemnly affirm?
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas?
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties?
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of council member for Edwardville, Kansas?
Of council member for Edwardville, Kansas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, sir.
Get off, bring me off there for just a second for me. Thank you. One, two, three. Cool. Thank you.
Congratulations on the returning councilmen. First item on the agenda will be approval of minutes from December the ninth.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the minutes from December the ninth. Meeting, would the clerk please call?
Adams?
Yes.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Next item will be statement of the bill's payment amount of four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two forty-eight.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve the statement of bills to four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents.
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the statement of bills paid. Would the clerk please call roll?
Adams?
Yes.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we move from that item, I just, I want to kind of just throw something out for thought process more than anything else. Is, kind of, the question is, the value of the statement of bills paid. So you're sending checks and then you're et cetera, and it gives you that information. But is it, you know, obviously, we have to give a cash report every month. We do give a cash report, we give the budget report, which I think gives you good information, and the quarterly reports. And I just, we're happy to do this. There will be a few changes because of the way payroll is being done now. So payroll checks won't show up because we don't use the check system. So I don't really need an answer per se, but you might just think, you know, is this valuable to, you know, to you as a councilman and to the public? I mean, obviously, the information's always available, but we do that, you know, the monthly budget report. So anything in here could capture there. You have the cash report, which is probably the most important piece there that we are not in debt in some way. So I wanted to bring it up, I wasn't sure best time, so I'll just, I'll just kind of throw that out there. If there's thoughts about it, feel free to speak, or you'll holler at me later, or, you know, sleep on it and let me know. I just, I just want to make sure we're using everybody's time effectively, that it's something that's giving value other than, well, we've already sent the checks.
Oh, we, can we make some comment about that now? What do you want to hear about?
Yeah.
My, our opinion?
Yeah.
So out of our packet, I mean, you look at this right here, and I see you guys nod your head, yeah, like...
Yeah.
So I think the most important thing is that, is lo- as long as we're able to access it, whenever we have a question or there's something that we want to see, I don't necessarily know that I need to see, you know, a hundred pages of numbers unless I have a specific question.
Right.
So I would be a, for eliminated.
We, like I said, we still make sure there's cash and shore.
Absolutely.
We still get the quarterly budget reports. We may change the format, make it, you know, make it more useful. I'm just trying to decide, you know, we kind of started this, I mean, way, way back when. I mean, literally, the checks set up here, and somebody came and went through all the checks, and then reported to the council. Okay, I'm all good with all the checks except the check number, you know, fourteen eighty-two, and let's go investigate. I mean, I just want to make sure it's, you know...
And I'm sure it's a staff time saver also.
Somewhat. I mean, I mean, we, we're still...
It's not a tree saver.
It certainly is that. Right. And I, I just, you know, how valuable is it as a, as a, as part of...
You know, like, it comes on the, it comes on our, the agenda when we get it on the internet.
Right.
I usually look at the early internet.
I do.
And I think I agree on that, that we don't need to kill all these trees. I do, I did like the background part, you know, where the larger checks?
Right.
That kind of, you kind of go to them, and if you write us a little explanation, I think that helps that quite a bit. I like to see that part stay in there.
And I like to check, I watch the percentages as we go through the budget.
Sure.
And if we're about halfway through, halfway through the year, and that sort of thing. So I wouldn't even, I would suggest maybe even just sending an email, but I don't know, we need to print it out everything.
I would agree with that. No need to print it, but I do want the information.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll, we'll kind of play with that, and so we might just see a couple of changes over, you know. We may break you back, we want to go to us, not what I wanted, I don't want to... I mean, I mean, the information's all there, right? We're not losing any information. Okay. Thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Mike. The next item on the agenda will be request for comments in the public. Okay, if there are none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Consider mayor's reappointments to Edwardville Planning Commission.
We hand with the staff. And we're, mayor members of council, this item is our annual review of the mayor's reappointments to our boards and commissions. This time around, we've got three planning commission members who are up for reappointment. We checked all three of the members and have reviewed their attendance history, and at this point, staff is recommending that the mayor reappoint these three members. The name, Tim Sweeten, John Altavod, and Greg Scott. They would, were they to be reappointed at this time, serve for additional three years. One, just quick note, usually, we would also have planning, excuse me, park and rec advisory board members and cemetery board members up for reappointment at this time. There are some members of those bodies who are up for reappointment, two on the cemetery board, three on the park board. At this time, we're kind of looking at different models for those boards going forward before we bring that, those members up for reappointment. We want to make sure we've got a solid concept to present to you, and we've notified the presidents of both those boards that were undergoing this review of those going forward.
All three gentlemen have agreed to serve another yes, sir.
The only other thing I would just add, it doesn't change the point, these individuals also serve as the Board of Zoning Adjustment under our code. So the planning commission is also the Board of Zoning Adjustment. They're not, they, they serve in two different capacities, but it's the same board.
Mr. President of the Board of...
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we accept your recommendations for the planning commission of Tim Sweeten, John Altavod, and Greg Scott for a three-year term?
Second.
It has been moved in second to approve the mayor's reappointments to Edwardville Planning Commission. Would the clerk please call?
Adams?
Yes.
Kay Hart?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Next item is to hear a presentation regarding Riverview Crossing Road.
Thank you, mayor members of city council. This presentation was basically presented last Thursday to a group of the neighbors from the area of Riverview Crossroad Project. We basically found out in the river view. We had a number of the attendees come, and I know a couple of them are here tonight, and there's a few, a few others. So I'm not going to, those that saw it, it's going to be somewhat repetitive, we're adding a little bit of information, but we'll go through this. Again, it's Riverview Crossroads. You'll notice a fancy project number up there. That's assigned by the state, basically, Perkerson Woods County District project number. I'm not quite sure how, when it's, again, it's a local project, how they come up with that. But that's, you'll, you'll see that number used a lot because it kind of is the identifier for it. We have here tonight with us, as you know, Randy Gordon, who is a vice president, heads the Public Works Group for BHC Roads, and David Smalling. I know you've seen him a few times, been, been here. He is a project manager, if it is. As I said the other night, one of the benefits is both of these guys are actually, in addition to being civil engineer PEs, they are traffic engineers as well. So they have some additional knowledge and experience around traffic and traffic planning and, you know, and those kind of things that oftentimes you might not have in that. If you do, you have one. It's unusual, you get to have two. The actual extension's P T O E, is that right there? And I'm not quite sure what all that means, but, but traffic engineers. So just a little bit of background, if you remember, we submitted an application, STP, which is the Surface Protection Program. It's effectively federal funding that comes back to the states, and then at the state level, state level, by federal law, certain amount of money has to go to, be sub-allocated to regions that have a certain population, I believe it's two, two hundred and fifty thousand. We're, so Kansas, we're basically three of those, Pico, which you call Kansas, Kansas City. There's also the Missouri side, so they have a whole separate STP. So we don't compare the Missouri side, even though we're all in the same region, being the marked region, that's two separate pots of money. We originally requested about four point six five million. Again, as you remember, you always go in with eighty percent of the whole project, and then there will happen, at least tonight, fifteen years of experience, and also serving in the board. The first thing that happens is they say, well, let's do eighty percent of eighty percent, instead of just at the very beginning, say, why don't we go with sixty-four percent? And so then everybody scrambles and reduces their projects, and then at the end of it, they generally fund somewhere between sixty and sixty-five percent, which we ended up at sixty percent. We were the last project funded, so we were always on the boat. We got a little bit of a bump because the beds kicked in, I think, if I remember, about another ten million dollars, and so it kind of helped us get funding. But at the end of that, we received three billion dollars from federal matching grants. It's still eighty twenty, and the match is only on construction, and what they call construction engineering, which is inspection. So while your project may be a lot more money, they only fund those things, and then even within that, there may be items that they will fund that were not funded. So fencing, they may put up highly fencing, but they're not going to put up picket fencing, or grass seeds, or if you want certain things in a project that are beyond their scope, then those are a hundred percent. After we were awarded the money, we engaged BHC Roads and started on this, this process. So there's kind of a general concept plan. The first big step is the field check plans, and then we go into office check, and then ultimately into the plans that are issued for bidding, and we'll get that. So we were supposed to have the field check plans in by September timeframe, maybe October timeframe. We've met that. The plans got submitted, they get reviewed. After review, they send back comments. Quite honestly, we had very few comments, and most of them were, hey, I'm seeing an endpoint here, I need some additional things. But overall, the plans were well done and few questions. So what is the project? Just to remember this, it basically is a hundred percent from Riverview. Riverview is being planned. I say it's a two-lane instead of turn lane. Sometimes people call it a three-lane road. So it is three-lane width, but we have a lane in each direction and a continuous left, you know, left center, turn lane. To the south, we're looking at a four-lane, the raised medium, basically ties into what's existing. It goes all the way to roughly Speaker Road, doesn't quite get down that far. We have to round it out at the intersection that we've seen before, and right now, our project estimate's five point four million. Now, that number is inclusive of everything. So everything from preliminary engineering to final bid project. So utility relocations, any right-of-way acquisitions, all those kind of things are all in there. So there's still some part of that that changes. I will tell you, it's been coming down, that's the, that's the good part. We also have to build into the project assumptions that twenty twenty-one, what the inflation factor of construction will be. And generally, the state uses, you know, five, six percent on inflation, so that's not what it is. So there is some possibility that number actually will go down by that. So I would say the past, we have great engineers, the BHCs are really good job of keeping our estimates low, and we appreciate that. I know these will be hard to see, but the, this has a, they got a, it's got a pointer on it on the internet, so I'm afraid to hit the red button. That's bad, isn't it? Okay. So what's hard to see, and we have these in detail, you know, the general project of this area, and you'll see kind of a dotted line on the outside. Those are, those are the temporary constructions, so it's kind of the outside part of it. What you can't see is the right-of-way line very, very clear in here. We will have to acquire additional right-of-way or get additional right-of-way. Riverview is effectively, today, it's a forty, both for exactly a forty feet. So on Riverview, we'll go to a hundred feet of right-of-way, and then on Riverview, we'll do eighty feet of right-of-way, which is keeping with our plan. I always like to remind us though, right-of-way, we use not just road, but all your utilities are in there. When the utilities love to use your right-of-way, that's always a challenge, but we have planning for that. So you got water out there, gas out there, fiber optics out there, you know, there's no sewer, but there is some sewer in that area. But, you know, you get a plan for all those things. So there's a lot of things under grounds, under sidewalks, et cetera, that you have to plan on.
Mike, before...
Yes.
I don't remember seeing, where's the lines? And go back to the House on Compass Center Development, both the dotted line and the...
I'm not quite, is that just for center line purposes?
It's utility.
He's talking about this?
Yeah.
Existing utility?
Oh.
Yeah. Existing utility, effective tower.
And do you know what the dash line down Speaker is?
We have to, I mean, we can look closer.
Okay.
It may also be utility.
Yeah. Really got the same down here, you know, here where there's power line.
Could be a service line, some sort of gas or water.
We want those details, I mean, and we have plans here. So just a little more detail to show you, this, this is the roundabout, kind of blown up. I don't remember, what's the outside diameter of that roughly?
Thank you. From side to side.
Yeah.
Sounds about right. How about radius?
Yeah, that's right. But it's, it is designed, I mean, obviously, it has to be certain design criteria. We, we did have some discussion about speed, as far as what's the design speed of this when we met with KDOT. And if I remember right, we are using a thirty mile an hour design. So you come into it at thirty miles an hour, that's the assumption, which is a keeping. But speed limits aren't there. It's capable of serving large vehicles as well as small vehicles, so your cars and your trucks. With the assumption that this area up here will have commercial development, and you'll have that kind of traffic, and so, design for that. You can see here, there's kind of a dark line, and then a smaller line down here. The smaller line is the existing grade. So as you know, when you come from the Bonner Springs side, you kind of come down to the intersection, and then you drop way down, and then eventually, you come back up. Kind of where that come back up is where we tighten the road. But we'll be elevating, and this area is all filled. You're about a foot higher at the intersection here, and three or four feet over here. So the road, as you see it today, generally speaking, will be higher in that area, in this general range around the, going through the roundabout. So just to give you an idea. And I know these are very hard to see, we'll try to find a better way, we'll get better detail. Again, it just shows you kind of the detail. Here's your curves, two lanes of traffic, a raised medium. This assumes a hundred feet of right-of-way. We know we're going to have to do a little bit of the utility easements on the, on the west side because of the power lines, because KCPL, and we want them to do this, wants to put in poles that are capable of handling three-phase electric service, so higher service. That, that type twelve feet. So their easement, I mean, there could be things below it, like sidewalks, but we still have to take in twelve feet, even though the pole only takes in a foot, because if something falls, et cetera, they have to be able to get in there. You'll see a sidewalk on one side of the road, a trail on the other side of the road, excuse me, multi-purpose pathway. Corrected here. The multi-purpose pathway is ten feet, the other one is five feet. It is part of, again, what they call complete streets, and when you're getting federal funding, or anytime you're getting money from other people, right? You generally have certain stipulations that go into it. These are some of the stipulations.
Do we know which side?
The, the trail will be, the multi-purpose trail will be on the east side because it aligns with what's known as the Metro Green Plan, which ultimately ties into Betts Creek, as you get farther south and cut over to it. So it'll be on that side, and the sidewalk will be on the west side, east and west. On Riverview, and I think there's still some, I was looking at our plans, the sidewalk generally would be on the north side of the red, black and green light. It's how, we're going to go ahead and go all the way down with it, our crosswalks, et cetera, typically, we'll put sidewalk, and that'd be on the north side, Riverview, at least to east. And to the south side, it's graded out. There's some water lines on the south side, there's already existing water line easement we have to work with, PPU's that's there. That's basically an eighty-foot right-of-way. Nothing too special about, you know, any critical pieces in there as far as anything unusual other than, like I say, our right-of-way and PPU's water line easement are going to overlap, and so we have to work out some details with them. Because technically, you can't fill a road up to the top of an easement, but if you have an easement with red, it's, they have easement already there. So what does that have to work with? And I see that to be a problem for our discussions.
Mike, how difficult would it be to expand the Riverview to, like, adding a turn lane at the intersections? Are we going to have enough room to do that for future?
Well, if you, I mean, you're not going to need it with the roundabout, but if you ever went and upgraded to signalized intersection, my guess is you would have to get additional right-of-way at the corner.
I'm talking about further down the Riverview, for intersections to the east.
Oh. Like, to get to, like, Hundred Second or something like that?
Right.
Or, or ones coming in potentially? I think we would, this is going, we're back up. So this area right about here is the alignment, actually, right here is the alignment with the end of the circle at Billy South Parkway. So you potentially have an intersection there, but we're not doing any right-of-way acquisition that far east in this project, if we're stopping here. So if you had to do a right turn lane in, you know, in out right turn lanes, you probably would not have an acceleration lane, because I don't think your speeds are going to be such on Riverview that you would have, you know, traffic that would say, you know, it's coming at forty or fifty miles an hour. You got to accelerate to get out into, into traffic like a gate or a two or an interstate, or replace that.
Does that right-of-way acquisition going east stop pretty much there at the end of the Pavich property?
Yeah, it roughly right at where the, where, on the south side is Pavich and Pete Smith, so right, right, their property line. On the north side, it's effectively where the, I think it's called Great Street LLC and the Compass Commodity Group property. So pretty close to the property. One of the, one of the decisions we made internally early on, and I think I've said this before, when we go acquire a right-of-way like this, even though a project may, you know, potentially, like, on Hundred and Ten Street, the project will end a couple hundred feet before you get to Speaker Road. It makes most sense. I think the property owner should agree, we would agree. If you're going to buy the right-of-way, just go buy the right-of-way all the way to the property lines when you can, because, right, I mean, the property owner doesn't want to have to go through this two or three times. It's much easier for us to go through it, and then in the future, that piece is done at the right. And so that is our plan, is to go, even if you're offset somewhat, we can go to a property line, a common property line, versus just ending it because the project ends there. So we have, on the north side, we went another twenty feet one way, tightened the property line, it may be different on the south side. Okay. So next steps, again, the next steps are office check plans, if you're going to know the details these guys can give you. But, you know, those plans just keep building upon each other. So now you're getting down, you know, you're showing inlet boxes and stuff, and now you're getting down to the actual size of things. You know, we don't have many of most of these things, but you're getting the more details as, as you go through the project. And then, of course, the construction plans, there's a whole lot of things that the state puts in there, the bid sheets and details, and it's all from the state get incorporated into the plans, because this is a KDOT project. We are the, we're kind of the host agency, but when this bids, it gets bid by KDOT. KDOT selects the contractor. And they, they, they give us a, if they say, here's the, here's the low contractor, accept or reject, but we don't get to say, well, we don't like that, we really have the next project. So we don't really have much input into that, once they've decided this is the contractor. That's the contractor managed out of the local office, which is Bonner Springs. There'll be a construction engineer or inspector on the site that is paid for through the city. We always have, and you've seen this, you know, on a three-party agreements of the city, the state, and the inspector. But the rates are all set. KDOT has a very, requires a lot of input put into their system, so everything goes into their system throughout the project. So you have to have people that know how to do that, in a sense of, they have to go to their office, input that, if you can probably not go in. I missed something? Okay. Make sure. We'll then do final plans around October of this year. If we can do them early, we can, but we're on a twenty twenty-one federal fiscal year. So effectively, right, that starts October one, and September thirty. So that, so it's scheduled to be in twenty twenty-one. We're anticipating being early into the twenty twenty-one bidding, getting the finishers to that, because in reality, it's not what happens, but it's been on the edge a few times. If for some reason the federal government has decided not to fund twenty twenty-one in their, in their budget, right? And as we know, they, they never adopt a budget for more than about six months at a time, as far as funding. If something were to happen, you would rather be in the funding process than, oh, by the way, your project hasn't, hasn't bid yet. Then they could say, well, we're going to hold your project, maybe, you know, maybe a short time could be a long time, but if you want to get into the bidding process, processes early, you should... Then they can say, well, we're gonna hold your project, maybe, you know, maybe a short time could be a long time, but if you wanna get into the bidding process as early as you can into the system. The other reason why that's important, pretty much thirty days out from bid date, we have to write our check, right? So, whatever that cost is, uh, and maybe we'll do an estimate, KOD does an estimate, and they'll say, the estimate for this project is X and your eighty percent share of this project is Y. Please issue us a check. And that's important because clearly, as we know, right, we'll have to issue some debt financing on that piece of the project. As it works, as it, you know, it's all on us and they don't really care, but thirty days out from bidding, they pretty much want their money, so they wanna know you're committed, so.
Is that January twenty-first or twenty-one, could it be earlier than that to go out?
It can be, so if it's a federal fiscal year, you can bid within the federal fiscal year, assuming they're ready to, I mean, there's a little bit on their side. You can also do it earlier in an earlier fiscal year. But what you do is you have to get an agreement, but it's kind of a pre-funding, so the entity funds the whole amount. And sometimes cities, when these projects are growing out over several years, they'll say, we're gonna go ahead and build this project and it'll get reimbursed over one or two or three fiscal years. So sometimes that happens on really big projects that are run, generally you'll see that on, on Lake, uh, Open Park, you know, a Metcalf or Hundred Thirty Fifth or a major highway intersection where, you know, like they have to get, get, they gotta bid the whole project early and so funds have to be there and then they get reimbursed. It's possible on this one, probably not likely, I think we'll be so close that it wouldn't make sense to go out and pre-fund it, you know, sixty, ninety days, probably just doesn't make sense. And then, construction, I'd say twenty twenty-one, it's a little bit based on bidding day, I don't know if we have an estimate on construction, but I,
Part nine total?
Yeah, construction time, probably nine months.
Yeah, we'll wanna try and get it all done in a single season.
The other thing I put up there is, uh, is the obtain the necessary temporary construction for a drainage and right of way. You'll probably aware of these, but I'll get them again. Temporary construction is, you gotta be able to get up there, grade, regrade, and if there's a driveway, you know, I can't just stop at the end of the driveway, I gotta be five or ten feet past it because I gotta tie in the old driveway, the new driveway. And so your temporary construction easements are generally the largest area that you'll have. They generally from, from a value are fairly low because what you're doing is you're going there, you're disturbing it, you're putting it back and it's in a better condition at the end of the project. Permanent drainage easements, as you notice, I'll go back. You'll notice there's like here and here and here, there, and, and these are, I take that, that's a driveway, driveway. You have already existing crossroad pipes and it feeds into, in this case, into Betts Creek. But we have to extend those pipes out so far past the road, et cetera, that what the permanent drainage easements allows us to go in there and maintain it for the long term. You know, Edriful Drive, you see them and they're, they're way off the side of the road and there's kind of a rock area, there's a head wall and the pipe's down there and it feeds into the creek. So, we're not changing the flow of water, but we're making sure we can maintain the structures that are there, that are outside of the right of way, but in a permanent drainage easement. And then the one that generally gets the most interest is rights of way, right? Everybody must know how much it means. We'll be working on that, we will hire, you know, I'll get on, I guess I can move to the, the next one. So, we will put together an acquisition team. We will need a appraiser, uh, on this, uh, probably Crystal Ford would be likely, we've used him several times in the past, he's local, he knows the, the market. We'll have some type of acquisition agent, I will probably be actively engaged in that as well. We have a fairly small number of property owners. But we still need somebody to do the legal part, all this gets filed with the county courthouse and there's some legal stuff around it. So, we'll put together that team. We have to follow this beautiful guy, which is one of the real property acquisitions, Kansas Highway Road Streets and Bridges. Those people, Katie and I all have a copy of this, they'll probably get more copies of it, uh, in, in this process. This all comes out of Federal Highway Administration, nineteen seventy basically said, this is the process that you'll use, how do you value, et cetera, et cetera. One of the things I would note, and this is probably the place that becomes the most controversial, is how properties value. It's not like a real estate transaction or a development transaction, somebody comes, I wanna buy a piece of property, I'm gonna give you X dollars a square foot, X dollars a square foot. And it, it kind of you negotiate a rate and that's what it is. In this case, it really left the value today and after the project was the value of that same piece of property. In theory, there could be no change in value, there could be an increased change in value. Typically, there is some loss in value because of loss of land. But sometimes it may be such a small piece that really has no value, you know, you're taking a hundred square feet, you know, and it's, and you've got fifty acres, it really doesn't impact it. In those cases, you generally give a, some type of minimal amount, more for the trouble than anything else. But the valuation process is different and actually where the appraiser comes in. So, you'll do two different types of appraisers. One is basically just a valuation. So if the value is ten thousand or less, it's not a formal appraisal, it's generally a valuation. If it's ten thousand or more, or even on the margins, then they will do a full appraisal where they go out and do comps, they'll put it all together in a binder. And then, that goes to a second appraiser who reviews the first appraisers. Not so much to say the value is good or bad, but is the process they use or the comps, whether the comps are, you know, you go get comps from Joplin, Missouri and you're going to the West, you know, how do you go with these comps? They're not, they're not part of the program. So, that's, you know, that's a process that oftentimes is different than people are used to doing when you're buying and selling a home or a piece of real estate. The last thing I say, and I said it the other night, is all acquisition costs are local, right? So, the, the one hundred percent paid for by the taxpayer, so obviously we wanna be fair and equitable, but, but, you know, we wanna, we hope people take that into consideration. We have limited amount of space that we can quote negotiate things, so if we're not doing a KOD project, there's a little more, you know, we can say, oh, well, we can do this for you if you can do this. You have a little less of that under, under KOD, so we just have to, you know, again, follow this, we have to document all of our conversations. There'll be an initial conversation with every property owner, everybody will have a right to present when the appraisal or valuation is done. We encourage people the other night, hey, let us know or something. One property owner said, yeah, I see you, you know, we did this driveway, that's great, I really appreciate it, you know, that the water be here, the water line goes over here and it goes down there and across the back of the driveway. Well, no, we didn't know that, but thanks, right? We, we need to know because we don't, you know, there's stuff like that out there that we may not know. So, I know, you know, that, you know, it's a small area, we all know each other, so we'll be working on that. I'll kind of leave it at that, uh, you know, if there's questions, if you want specifics, again, these guys are here, they're certainly happy to roll out a plan sheet here after the meeting, uh, and, and go from there. So, at this point, if there's not other questions, Claire, yeah?
Well, a few questions, but one of my main questions is for the sidewalk and multi-purpose trail.
Right.
Um, those are primarily on two properties that could be, uh, a very, very big hardship financially on property owners and we're expecting them to maintain that. And I don't feel like that would be a fair, uh, thing to ask of them, I didn't know how that was being addressed.
Well, that's probably a good question, I don't have an answer for. I, I will tell you that, you know, we like most cities have a policy, said you have to take care of the sidewalk in front of your house, right? And so you gotta shovel snow off with things like that. Oftentimes, these multi-purpose trails are tied into being part of maybe the parks and rec or trail systems and the city will maintain those. Now, the right of way is technically already responsible to the property owners, so mowing it, keeping it out in those areas. But in these kind of undeveloped areas, it, it's a bigger question than this, this cross, this, this front, even passparties, right? Edriful Drive where we, where we, you know, where we did that, well, how far did we maintain, how far is the property owners? Yeah, how's the backs up to it, have you got something to face it, and how are we gonna do that? So, there probably a bigger policy question we need to address as this goes, goes forward and say, what, what is our expectation? So, you know, even mowing it, right?
When would be the right time to address that?
Well, probably pretty soon, I mean, I mean, I don't think I told you to change how this is built, right? I don't think you're gonna, meaning we're not gonna put it in because, I won't say we have no option, but I mean, we would have to go back and go through a process to see if they would let us get it out. My guess is they, on this one, it would be very difficult to do.
Well, and what I would just say.
And it's an arterial, you know, and maybe that's the thing, but we, we say this is an arterial, it may not be arterial at the, under the Federal Highway Classification, they would hold it as an arterial. And that may be, you know, it may be if the policy would say an arterial, we're gonna maintain, you know, from one foot behind sidewalk to the, you know, to the curb where we do it. Now, that's what we're doing on Edriful Drive, right? We, we basically mow from, you know, roughly a foot or two behind the sidewalk out to the curb through that area where we rebuild that road. Now, we have another side of the road, you have property owners where they have, their yards come all the way out and they mow to the curb and there's no sidewalks. Those, those are kind of, you know, and then what do you do where you don't have any of that? And then somebody says, well, why are you mowing that, but, you know, for, for my, uh,
Right, yeah.
So, having a good policy will be.
Really, I would really like to see that soon because that is a huge piece here. And it would mean a lot to me if I were living there, um, and I just couldn't get to put that responsibility, you know, we can't have this passage out here shovel with the multi-purpose trail when it's going, look glassy, that is maybe, but.
But, very good, excellent question. Had not really given it a thought.
Is it asphalt, concrete, huh? It's, there's a big sidewalk.
Say what?
The multi-purpose trail is concrete?
Yes. We talked about using it in the project, but kind of came back to calling it asphalt. I mean, long-term life is better, it's somewhat a little easier to maintain, it adds some costs to the funding, it is, it's better.
It does better. Um, asphalt, one, and, well, concrete would look better. I was, I was gonna ask as well, and there might be mixed feelings here about it, would it save a lot of money? I feel like the multi-purpose trail fits, um, what our requirement is through the grant, the national money. What if we didn't have a trail on both sides of the road, right? It just seems redundant and I don't love improving water side of the street with our money. Is that something that would be possible or would?
It's definitely, we're, we're some discussions, I mean, we probably still have to, uh, so we would still put in this grading for it, right? Would still be, we would still have to grade it out, and that's exactly, that's kind of what we did on Kansas Avenue, right? I mean, so when we made application, partially we said, hey, we want to not fully implement a complete street by not having sidewalks on both sides of the road, but we will grade it so that it will be prepared for future sidewalks. So is that an option, we can certainly discuss that. It, it, I mean, there have been some, you know, it's just like River View, you know, how far are you gonna go down? But, but, you know, it, it, you're trying to plan for the future and it, you know, people say, why are you building a sidewalk and stopping here, right? Well, okay, at what point, you know, if you don't do some, then you never get any, and, you know, and how do you decide where to stop or not stop and who's gonna pay for it, not gonna pay for it? How's the, how's the, you know, etc.
Can you define arterial, like, wouldn't arterial mean all the way from I seventy to thirty-two highway?
Yeah, we, we would consider, so we basically, so you basically have, and, and, and our traffic, now you're probably getting a lot of, but, but arterial's are generally designed to carry traffic through from, in place, somewhat in place of your place.
Why, why has it got that designated heading, or does it?
Well, it does for, it does for traffic funding purposes, number one, primarily. And number two, just for classifications or zoning. So it, it also decides how close together the gradations will be when you're gonna have, technically you should have residential properties going out onto an arterial, right? Because it, it's only designed to carry traffic between places. Collectors are designed to take, uh, neighborhoods or places, you know, industrial, commercial, or rent, you know, type like, and bring them out to the arterials. And then local streets is pretty much, it's only serving some specific, hey, neighborhood would be local streets. Or, uh, maybe you have some streets around, uh, large park, dealerships, you know? I mean, they got some streets that are internal to that, right? Those, those are, those are, those internal ones are kind of local, then they go to the collector and then they get out to parallel or State Avenue and those would be considered arterial. Kansas City's probably got a, a deeper, you know, you classify those into one-twos and threes, we pretty much say arterial, collector, and, and local. I think probably the feds have this as a major collector, maybe a minor arterial, is how they classify.
Minor arterial, I think is the way it could be.
Yeah. So, there, again, it's, it's somewhat laning, but, but again, the arterial's because you're connecting State Highway K thirty-two, I seventy, and also to other large forest points, right? The Legends, the Speedway, those are the things that trigger its classification.
But change the name from arterial to collector, it affect the federal branch?
Uh, well, it has to be.
Has to be collector.
Has to be a collector required to be eligible.
Trying to figure, I'm trying to figure out how, maybe back over here, I'm, with one, like, improvement in monitor, I agree with that. Why do you need a trail on one side that's concrete and a sidewalk on the other side? Isn't that, I mean, do you have to have that? We had that little deal on a hundred and tenth where we did it, you know, down here. Right. Same thing on Kansas Avenue, weren't they wanting sidewalks on both sides? Somehow we got out of that.
And we can start to look at that.
I would, so.
It was a scoring, made it? All the projects that wanted the share of federal funds for that two-year cycle, they had a lot of different criteria ways to get points. Mike mentioned this was, this was the last project that made it above the cut line. I mean, one point different, was one point different between giving three million in federal funds and that.
So we could go around losing all together if we.
It, what it means is we would wanna be very careful in making sure that nobody felt like that was somehow, uh,
In other words, don't get in an argument with the feds over that one.
Right.
Well, this, this item about, and, 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 and I don't think it's, so this, this concept around complete streets is really over the last five years, I would say, has really asked me, really what they want, which we do need to do, we don't have a complete street policy, right? Now, some places, they're very, very detailed, they're very, you know, the policies this thick, other places are, you know, they're one or two-page, right? We're more one or two-page, but, but this concept of complete streets that, so a multi-purpose trail, right, is really for the purposes of people hiking and biking and walking and running. And a sidewalk is more just local, local usage, right? I get out of my house, I walk down the sidewalk to my neighbors or I, or maybe around an industrial area, it gives me a place to walk out of the road. It's really around walking, it's not for bicycles, it's not for other uses, it's really, and so they want those two means of traffic separated. Really what they want to see is that you have a multi-purpose trail, you have a dedicated ten-foot bike lane, you have two road lanes, you have center median, two road lanes, another dedicated bike lane, and then a sidewalk or another multi-purpose trail. That's the idea now, when we talk about right of way, now all of a sudden I got a hundred and forty feet. And it's costly, and so, so it, it is one of those, you're trying to kind of put the needle in there a little bit to try and make sure you're gonna score well to get funding. And try to, I mean, the concept's good, right? We want people to get out and walk and like, and, and I, you know, I remember Mr. Carpenter said back there when we did, you know, Edriful Drive, which was, uh, it was an exchange of federal funds. So it became local, so we didn't have to follow all the federal things, and we said, why are we gonna put sidewalks in? And, and he was an advocate for the sidewalks because he watched the users and, and, you know. Personally, I was like him, I went, I, we just put money, nobody's gonna use it. Personally, I was like him, I went, we just put money, nobody's gonna use it. And then he gets used to walk. I mean, I see people out there, right? I see people walking on the ones that Kansas Avenue, you know, so.
See, my, my view of this is, not that it's enhancing water springs at all, that's not the issue to me. The issue is the project.
Right.
What does it do for the overall project?
Right.
But I also think there's an element to campaign forward for the future. If we get a reputation, cut the corners and not following our agreement as it was written, could possibly jeopardize some future funds if we're on the cusp.
And it may get that, you know, I mean, and these projects, right? And now, we've had, you know, we may get down as we get close to bidding and funding, you know, for whatever reason, a funding issue becomes a problem. You know, if I'm looking at things to do, right, and we talked about that early on, then it may be we go back and say, you know, this sidewalk is, you know, free at a thousand dollars and this is a problem and ask for an amendment to it. So, that there may be, you know, because something's, you know, the price of concrete's gone up 40% because, you know, oil's gone up and all of a sudden, you know, what we were thinking was gonna happen, you know, we can't, you know, it's gonna make it not cost. Also, remember the $3 million is, is an 80/20 match. So, in reality, you have to have $3,750,000 of qualifying federal funding, right? If you only have three and a half million, then they're gonna give you $2,800,000 or whatever. So, if you don't get the $3 million, if you don't put in the 20%, so they, they look at 100% and they say, we're paying a qualifying expense.
Do we know how much we're gonna buy the point for our qualifying expenses?
Yeah, we're pretty, yeah, I mean, about 4.2 million.
So, we're so pretty good on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the other thing that I was just thinking might come up with the water side as well, and I know, um, I, I've thought about it a little bit, is just in that maintenance place as well. We have no teeth to have them maintain it at all. Um, so we wouldn't be maintaining that, that part of the property ultimately.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, and I will say this, uh, so the city manager there and I have, over, I've, I've been exchanging some content because we do need as part of this project, I mean, part of this project's in water springs, right? So, we need their, you know, their connection to it. I mean, KI, you know, say, hey, well, you know, how are you gonna deal with this and maintenance and things? And so, we've been talking about that, you know, is it a maintenance agreement? Is it adjustment, potentially, city limit lines that just, you know? So, right now, today, let's just say, if you did it, the sidewalk would be half in one city and half in yet. Well, does it make sense just to move the, the city limit lines five feet over so you get the whole sidewalk in Edersville to maintain it, you know, the roundabout? I mean, if you look at the city limit lines today, it's gonna hit right in the middle, well, so if there's a car wreck, who's gonna do something to that? You know, is it, is it Edersville or bottom? And who's, who's taking care of it? So, so we've been having some, I think, some very productive discussions about how we're going to do these things. And it may require some adjustments in city limit lines or maintenance agreements or things like that. So, we all know where that, that's it. We did the same thing with KCK. I mean, if you take the median on 110th Street, you know, technically, the city limit line is about four feet on the other side of, of where the, the north side of the, uh, of that median. We're all, we all got together and said, okay, who's gonna mow to where? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go all the way to the curb, you know, on, on and off rate. We're gonna mow the state state car, the on and off rate. KCK, the whole bridge all the way over, you know, you know, weeding around the trail, open bridges and action. So, some of these things get negotiated and it may not fall exactly on, you know, a line that's, right? And three, you can put on these papers over on the line. I don't know, Mr. Seitz?
I would go with, I would think on the reserve.
Okay. Anything else on this?
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir. So, we'll go to the next item, which is related to this.
Okay, next item is consider authorizing city manager execution amendment to the facial services agreement with VAC Roads for River View Crossroads Project.
Uh, simply put, if you remember when we did this project, uh, initially, because we had fewer federal dollars and so we kind of cut back to our project to kind of stay focused on just 110th Street and, and the median. And we came, the council said, well, that's good, could we go ahead and at least plan to go this 1,550 feet so tie into the road at a, at a good point, uh, and get it through field check? And so, that was authorized, there was about additional $49,000, uh, almost $50,000 authorized to do that work. That work's all been done now. So, now we're at the point of saying, are we gonna incorporate this project altogether? Which absolutely makes sense, I mean, the dollars make sense. But our contract with VAC Roads said take it through field check, not take it through final construction for that piece. We think, or they think, based upon hours used to date and everything, that we'll be able to do it under our existing contract. But again, as we get into some of these details, potentially something comes up. So, what we're proposing is to go ahead and authorize amendment number three. We've had two prior amendments. Uh, one, one was, we wanna talk about here. Another one was to amend the contract so it was in line with KI. KI had some requirements about, uh, insurance and whole harmless and things that wasn't in the contract. And then, so this is number three. And what we're saying is we would go ahead and authorize them to complete all the work, the whole project, uh, and authorize basically a contingency of an additional $40,000, extra, less than 10%. To finish that work, again, and they can speak to it. They don't believe that they'll need that, but that's kind of a worst-case scenario. And so, that is our proposal. Then the contract, then authorize up to $40,000 additional money. They obviously have to justify those expenses. As the good, you're being randy, I'll tell you, I'm a nitpicker on invoices.
Is the total approved?
Yes.
So, I just, a simple motion to, yes, to approve or authorize the city manager to be entering to amendment number three for 110th. Okay, that's what I was gonna ask about this amendment.
Yep.
Is the date correct on the background, second program? Was it January 28th, the night, 2019 going?
Yes. The original contract was 14th, we amended it following meeting on the 14th.
You seem like that long.
Technically, we didn't get formal approval of the federal funds until February of 2019. And that we didn't hear that part. And they don't care because they don't pay for the sparks, so.
Could you tell me what's covered in that, that price adjustment, like what type of work? I know you guys are really familiar with it, but I'm just wondering.
So, really, what that would cover is theoretically, if we can't go ahead and add final design, right, for the, what was added on the east leg of River View within what had previously been approved. In fact, it's a matter of previously, when you said, hey, you know what? Let's go ahead and do preliminary design for that extra 1,400 feet on the east leg of River View. You said, okay, for survey and everything else, it was like we added, like Mike said, almost 50,000. And that put the total contract amount, almost a year ago, at, at $409,000, I think. What this does is say, if we can't go ahead and do final design, including the extra quarter mile on River View to the east, within the $409,000, we at least, you, you're kind of unnoticed that if we come back and say, you know what? You really did take longer than we thought. You acknowledge that you increased our obligation of what we have to do for the city. And that cap did $40,000 for what that extra final design's gonna be. Realistically, based on what we've, what we've spent to date for what we've done, I don't think we're gonna invoice more than the $409,000 you had previously approved. But originally, what we, what I said, Mike, was, hey, you know what? We acknowledge we're adding to our scope to final design, including east. We think we can get it done for what you've already approved fee-wise, but we acknowledge that if something comes up and we're not able to finish everything for $409,000, we'll come back and negotiate with the city. And Mike's like, the downside of that is you, there's no, there's no limit based on what number we would ask for. And he's like, you know, it's an open-ended obligation on the, on the pessimist side. I get it, okay. So, you want some, you want some control, you want some assurance. So, we threw a number, he gave me a really low, low number and I bumped it up. I learned.
But, so the area we're talking about, basically from right here to here, right?
But the $409, that was for the?
Yeah, the $409 included all the preliminary for all of this and basically construction of this.
It's just, the $40,000 is just in case proportionally, all the extra detail we have to put in to get a penny for a big potato. Kind of worst case.
And there's not, the good thing is there's, the, the, probably the biggest piece on this project is that, that, you know, the top in the Bex Creek, that, the large structure, right? And that was really in the original piece in there. Probably the most unknown is the water line. Because there's a 12-inch water line that runs through. And so, you know, there's removing graves and stuff like that, uh, or extending that box, you know, where there's some details of things that they get into during this, you know, kind of final processes that, you know, just are unknown right now. I, I think we probably have most of the known facts, but, yeah, the way I read the contract was, well, if we have to do more work on such a build, we'll justify it, that's, that's great, I want a cap. So, we have that relationship, so. But I would do that with anybody, so, um, that's really what that does.
It probably makes, not ready for a motion. I would, I would recommend the, uh, the amendment to amendment number three, to approve amendment number three for 110th Street, the River View Avenue funding.
Okay, there's a motion to second to approve the amendment number three for the River View Crossroads Project.
Do we need to say?
There's amendment number three. It takes in there, it takes in $40,000.
Everybody clear on that? Would the clerk please call?
Adams?
Yes.
K R?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
I'd like to note that I'm not trying to, not in, help enhance water springs, I always look at more budgeting a little bit. But for us, where we could save some money, it wasn't anything negative toward water springs. If there's ways, I don't understand a lot of that grant kind of stuff and all that.
And there may be some, there may be some other issues around depending on what's coming to develop.
And I'm definitely a fan.
Don't want to build it.
Definitely a fan of the project. Oh, the timeline, and that runs along pretty well with it. Maybe some ripstole up, up there on that.
It'd be awesome.
You know, I mean, we, the hotel project is slated at this time to complete, you know, April to, April of June 2021. So, it, it would be pretty close to the same timeframe. And I'm just gonna say it here right now, there will be road closures, right? Just, we, just, there's, there's no way around that. I mean, we've talked about options, but they're clearly, you know.
I just wanted to note.
How to figure it out.
In favor of the project, it's just, I was trying to save some money on it.
Right, I understand.
Okay, next item is we consider authorizing city manager to approve a sign change order number one and final for the 2019 Crack Seal Project.
These are really the two projects that, uh, Katie Snyder was, uh, was working on and all finishing up. Uh, the first thing that we have before is, is the Crack Seal Program. We originally, uh, had that budgeted in the amount of 90, it's all based on units, right? You do unit pricing and then whatever your units come in at, that's what you, you pay off of. So, in this case, unit pricing was roughly $94,954. The final units that we used priced out to $76,364. So, we had an underrun, uh, of about $18,590. The project is complete, uh, for the work that they're doing under this contract. As noted, we pretty much have everything done, with the exception of Kansas Avenue and 102nd Street. I think, you know, obviously, Kansas Avenue is a fairly new road, so that's, I mean, Crack Seal was good to do early in its life, but, uh, you know, in this sense, that, if you're gonna not do one, that's probably one of the better ones. And 102nd Street, you know, part of that's new parking zones. So, our recommendation is to, we're basically accepting the project is what we're doing and approving the final pay app. So, just kind of formalizing the project that is complete and the pricing. Yes, sir.
When we make motions, though, and we approve the initial project, we always say not to exceed the amount of $94,954. So, why is there a need for us to make an amendment to that? Because we didn't exceed it and we came in under and.
Probably don't have to. I, I think, one of the things, I, I think it's, it's an opportunity for us to come back to you so you know that the project's done and it's been, and it sets a formal acceptance date for warranty purpose, right? So, they have, I don't know what the warranties on this one, but, you know, most roads is two years of paving. And so, it sets the date, could we go back to the council and approve this project and approve the final payday on this day? It's only a change order, I, I'm not even totally sure why there's a change.
Right, and I guess that's what I was saying. I would think it would kind of be like, be a motion to accept the, um.
You're accepting the project.
Project being incomplete.
And I think that's honestly.
I mean, I'm just, I'm not trying to change it right now, I'm just saying in the future, it just doesn't seem.
You're just authorizing me, I, I mean, it's.
Only, you already did authorize it.
That's true.
I, I'm good with it. I'm not trying to change, I'm just saying, we already approved it and we not to exceed the amount. We didn't exceed the amount, so good job.
I think our, our public works director, do you use it as kind of the formal way to close out the project? That the council doesn't, like Mike said, to start the block up before.
I think that that could be done just by the public works director saying, hey, the Crack Seal Project is completed, warranty is now started?
I'm just, I'm not trying to change it, I'm just.
It's kind of nice to have a public record that we can.
That we.
Which is really good thing. The other thing, what seal, did they not apply to Kansas?
Well, it's just Crack Seal, I mean, there, there's not a lot of cracks. Some, generally on a new road, if you're gonna have crack, cracks per se, it's going to be the center, the center seams where the asphalt was connected.
It's in, it's on Kansas?
Well, I don't know.
That's been done on Kansas.
I didn't go out there and look at it, I was caught off.
If there was extra, I could use the 98s.
I don't know, you have to put, you have to put so much in there, it would be over budgeted or something.
I don't know if they, if they made the corner, it wasn't too rich.
Yeah.
But I, I've seen it, in fact, I saw them working on Kansas. Heating the, they were heating the pavement and then putting the.
A lot of some of the portion of Kansas Avenue being there from 110th Street towards the, I haven't.
We can provide the full deal.
Again, I think really what we're doing here is we're, we're looking for, you know, that, that project's being accepted. That's really what we're doing.
I'm gonna make the motion to exactly what it says, okay? And then if we change it in the future, we probably, and I don't want to think that I'm trying to change it. I was just clarifying that we did exactly what we already made a motion to do. Uh, I make the motion to accept, uh, the change order, to approve the change order number one and final for the 2019 Crack Seal Project.
Second.
It has been moved to seconded to accept the change order number one and final, uh, Crack Seal Project 2019. Would the clerk please call?
Adams?
Yes.
K R?
Yes.
Milan?
Yes.
Driver?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is consider authorizing city manager to approve sign change order number one and final for the 2019 Street Maintenance Project.
And essentially, this, this one, we did go over budget by $607.54 by adding some additional rock and, uh, as it says there, a rise or a drain. This is basically the project on Edge Hill, where we did the first half, we got the inlet box, we took it across the street, we picked it up and we carried it to the creek and there was some, some improvements. So, same thing here, we're just, we're closing this project out, the work is complete, it was functioning. Uh, and we'll have a, a slight increase, it just says it equals a 2.18%. So, any product would then, 3% for me, always a good. Says it equals a two point one eight percent, so any project with a three percent, probably always a good project, so.
I'll be the bad guy and make a motion to approve an overrun of six hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Well, I'll second it, but I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So when we make a motion, that, and we set that dollar amount.
Right.
I mean, I'm just asking, why did it not come back to us because it clearly didn't fall under the not to exceed that amount?
Why did it not back before we did the work?
Yes, yeah, it did exceed it.
Yeah.
So why do we make a motion to say you can't exceed it?
Yeah.
And, but we didn't.
Yeah.
Well, we could not approve this.
Yeah.
And, and we still owe six hundred and forty, six hundred and seven dollars and fifty-four cents in arguments.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess that would be our option.
Yeah, but I guess what I'm saying is at what number, at what percent, if it's, if it's five percent, is it ten percent? What if, what if you came back to us right now and said, man, we went over twenty-eight thousand dollars? What's the difference in six hundred and seven dollars versus twenty-eight thousand dollars when we had an overrun? Well, we didn't, I mean, I didn't know there was an overrun, not that I want to know.
Right. You know, and it probably, and we always, I mean, on projects, there's generally some, some amount of...
Wiggle room.
Wiggle, yeah, so, and maybe in the future, that's what we need to do is just build in when we come to you and say, we've got a contract for twenty-seven thousand nine hundred ten dollars plus a five percent contingency and then we know, you know, we know, uh, hey.
That's my...
If it's, if it's a contingency, you know, quite honestly, if, I mean, if, if they would have come in and said, oh man, this thing is actually, we're actually another twenty thousand dollars, you would have heard from us, right?
Sure, sure, but I'm just saying, I mean, it doesn't, you know, visually, this doesn't look right.
Yes.
We made, we made a motion, don't go over this.
Right, and we did.
And I'm not saying, I'm not faulting you.
No, no.
I'm saying, but you did.
Right.
And we didn't know, I mean, we didn't, we didn't know, so, I mean, it's just kind of like, but I like the five percent, um, thing too.
So, so you're saying, go ahead, put the five percent in the...
In the, in the first.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
Not to exceed six hundred and seventy-nine, or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus five percent contingency.
Yeah, I personally would rather say not to exceed twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and ten dollars plus or minus five percent, or plus five percent.
Yeah, I know, thank you, I gotta say the minus.
Yeah, we, I don't think you need to.
Right, the plus.
But, but I like the number of the contract they put in there without the five percent.
That's what I said, that's what I said, the number.
I'm, I'm just, I guess I misunderstood, but I understand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying just put the five percent in there to begin with and then I don't worry about coming back.
I, no, I'm saying, so you don't have to come back with and say, well, it came under, well, we don't care.
Can I suggest really quick, um, because some of our numbers are closer to a million dollars than twenty thousand, we might want a set number instead of a percentage, like we might want to say within...
That was, that was my comment, if you don't, just don't use a percentage, just use a dollar.
Well, I think what we can do going forward is say this is, so when we go after it, you know, almost all these public works types, things are almost all these unit based contracts, right? And you go out and you ask them what the units can be and, and you, it's best on something like crack seal. So if it's coming in and you, you, then you extend the amount of work if you have the opportunity to get it, probably what's the budget. So because we're unit based, what we can do though in the future is just when we come in for that recommendation, you know, we're basing on these units, this is what we think a maximum number should be, and we can put in a contingency, whatever that should be. If it's, I mean, it's always gonna have a dollar amount to it, but like you say, some projects, I mean, a four million dollar project in ninety-one, ten percent, that's four hundred thousand dollars, you may not have to come to a budget with that, but maybe a two or three percent is a more comfortable. Just like we're doing on Riverview, when the project started off, it probably had twenty percent contingency built in.
And you do a contract by contract or do you have to set on all?
No, no, I just say, when we come in, it will, so going forward, when we come in, we'll bring you a contract amount and not to exceed and a, whatever a reasonable contingency is with that particular contract. So like you say, if it's a four million dollar contract, the percentage may be less, dollar amount may be more. On a small contract like this, sometimes you may need to have a higher percentage because, you know, ten percent of, you know, twenty-seven, nine, ten is only three thousand dollars.
I challenge with it is if I'm a contractor and I know I've got a two hundred, I've got two hundred fifty thousand dollars and I've got a five percent possibility for an overage, I'm running four point eight percent over.
Well, they still have to justify the contract.
I can justify it, I can figure out how to do it. And so that's my concern is I would much rather, um, deal with it some other way other than giving them the number, an accelerated number that we would reach.
And, and maybe we vote on it tonight and then that's something that we, we discuss and we come up with.
Well, when we come back forward for future contracts, I, I think we got the message.
I, I, yeah.
We do want to, I mean, the, the good part about coming back to you though with these projects, I mean, they're probably running to a... Right, I mean, one, number one, it puts in a hell of a burden when the project was accepted, because all warranties start when it's accepted. Right, I mean, I'll tell you at the lift station, right, we finished the project, but it hadn't been accepted and we said, if these things are done, we're not accepting the project. And they didn't, didn't, didn't finally, they got them done and we said, okay, we'll accept the project. That added several months to the, to the period of when the warranty starts, so it's on date of acceptance. So what this does is it normalizes the acceptance date, right? So we can go back and say, it was accepted by the city council, was your, your, you know, that, that's the authority base, you know, and it was done on this day. I mean, now could the city manager be the acceptor or public? You could, this just gives that extra layer, so if you ever get in litigation, somebody said, well, the city manager's... You know, we think that's when we accept, no, we have clear document on this date, this time, it was approved.
I like that, because it puts, it puts the responsibility on, in a public forum.
Yeah.
And not just on one individual.
And the second thing it does, quite honestly, it helps communicate that this project is, how we did on this project to you and to the public, right? I mean, we did good, we went over, or we got it under, or we missed it all together, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a check and balance, a public check and balance of the process, which I think is about.
I make the motion to approve.
It's already been done.
Oh, where is it?
I called a question.
Oh, yeah, I said it.
And I have one more question, just out of curiosity.
Yes, was the question called?
No, I don't...
Okay, okay, you...
I think it's a motion in the second, I didn't...
I heard the comment question, oh.
I don't know.
So this was, this project was completed November twentieth.
Right.
So is there a reason why this didn't come to the December meeting or?
Uh, I don't...
I'm just curious on that.
I don't, I don't know for sure, I, I'm gonna assume we just didn't have a, they may have still had to have, uh, their bonds, warranties or under, you know, grass seed down, I, I don't, I don't know.
Just curious.
Okay, will the clerk please call?
Adams.
Yes.
Kayhart.
Yes.
Milan.
If you repeat the motion, please.
The motion to approve and sign, the, the, operate city manager to approve and sign change order number one, final for the two thousand nineteen street maintenance project. Let's keep it on the road, Steve.
Yes.
Yes, right.
Stike.
Yes.
Mike, you're up again, make it brief.
It's so brief, I'm welcome to the new year. My cold is not... If you have... There's some other event going on, I don't know a lot of people need to get to, so, thank you, I don't know what it is.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Chief of Beef.
Do it there.
As you know, we've had a lot of activity in the north end, uh, visible activity, that activity, various forms have been going on for some time. Uh, we did make a brass drive by shooting on ninety-eighth street, uh, there were several of us quite frankly, and, uh, half of that is still pending. Uh, some gang, deep discussions, taking care of a lot of different things. Uh, and as a side note, with that, we dealt with the property owner and who is a terrific person and it's very cooperative and they're doing some things on their end at RV Hest, uh, so they avoid some legal trouble of their own to pursue, uh, whatever avenues they, they're gonna take. So we've been in contact with them and he's done some formal things, I don't know exactly what they are, but, uh, we're, he's asked us to give a trespass, no trespass order to the person, so we'll send it at the, that mailing address and we'll go from there, that's our next final step. We have a number of investigation things to take care of, uh, yet, so we, the story continues as we go along, so we're very busy. We did have that fatality just right before the holiday, uh, single car, uh, K thirty-two, that is coming to some resolve. We invited the Kansas Island Patrol to look over that form of paperwork, they were not available and they typically would be, uh, in that particular circumstance because there was a plane crash there in Jones County, so they were working that and so thus, we, we were the lead agency on that particular... Number of events, we had the second busiest year in our history, uh, twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, we haven't, we didn't surpass that, that's the only thing we're second to. So we'll be bringing some of those, uh, that piece of information since it's police, this beginning, uh, to you in the next few weeks, months, something like...
First quarter.
First quarter, so, uh, you'll be hearing some of that, so that's what I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep waiting.
We're still on advertising for fire paramedic, it's gone back out again through our, uh, insurance lab, and we call it the job search. As Chief of Beef said, we had the fatal accident, so last six hours of the year. But, uh, after the December council meeting, the crews went back out, burned off the brush piles at the cemetery. We've also identified about another ten or two feet trees they had to come down, we'll be working on some more brush clearance projects through fire control and other aspects we have to do a training on during that cemetery throughout the winter months here, so. There will be some activities going on up around these, so we need to agree. Point, point, cemetery, I mean, they'll see the fire crews in and out of there.
Thank you. Public Works did a wonderful job over there.
Okay, I was gonna compliment them on that, they did a good job.
I didn't do much, I did spend a long time in the truck, just to, to be quite honest, just to get a better idea of some of that, so I had the opportunity to spend a little time with them. Me in front and see what they do, and I tell you what, it's, that's not nearly as easy as it looks. It's hard to see and stuff's out there and we're working around the mail, truck delivering mail and cars and a dog runs across and it's, it's, it's... We're never called to make it, or something, you know, especially when you're doing it at three AM, so.
Check in, we'll start with you.
Two things, one is, uh, we've got a nice big roundabout that's gonna go in on the north end and it'd be nice to start thinking about what we can do in the center of that as a weapon to our community and, 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 uh, market, place, market, and that, so. Nice to think about some ways we can involve the community in that possibly, and possibly use our, um, our foundation possibly as, as a way to fund that. And, uh, also wanted to congratulate, I guess Mike is probably what I want to congratulate, is we have three projects in the long term twenty fifty plan that are, that are in there, been submitted, so it's, it's good to see that. For a small town, we are extremely well represented on that list.
So two of them are, two of them are, so they're, they're all called constrained because there's no dollars for it, but, but in the plan, so. We had two projects that were in the high priority, uh, that being Edwardsville Drive, one hundred tenth street and ninety-eighth street. And then Riverview was in the medium category and I don't think we had anything in the low, low priorities.
Just really proud of, of the work that our staff does, in particular Mike, um, in presenting those projects and making them a very viable project at that level. And I, I think for the population, the size of the city, we have, we are extremely well represented in the, in the city, or the metropolitan areas. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Carol?
Um, I just wanted to congratulate the guys for being reelected for the next term, um, starting the year off well. And then, um, this may seem off the wall, and so I'm just gonna put it out there and you can think about it. A couple of cities in Kansas have talked about just the idea of getting your daylight savings in Kansas. And so I know that Edwardsville's not gonna change it and we're gonna be in the middle, but if enough cities are behind it, then it might be something our state actually thinks about. So I just thought I would put that out there for us, if, if y'all wanna just think about what Edwardsville be in support of eliminating daylight savings for the state, because if enough cities wanna do it, maybe the state would consider that as well.
Thank you. Here.
Uh, stand us on streetlights. I reached back out to them today, I have not been back, but I just reached back out. Talked to a Everdy man, just put his arm over my fence the other day and asked me where Bonner Springs was. And I said, you're standing in it. And he said, well, where? I said, this is Everdy, I said, you're in Bonner Springs, well, what's that street light up there at the entrance to Lake Forest, is that Bonner Springs or is that Edwardsville? I said, you've got the map, I said, it's Bonner, they can pay for it, but the street lights cost like eighteen dollars a month is what I found out. If, I would like to see that, especially in light of that, which is, I guess, I, I'm gonna just keep saying, but that, that area, I grew up there and it's dangerous, extremely dangerous, I see kind of things all the time if they're, if they're forced to, if that happens. That's, I'm just gonna go ahead and...
I, I did follow up with them today as well.
I think it was...
It, it's still like, so that's West Star Service, I gotta go talk to the West Star guy. I know they said you're all Everdy, but if you go wrong personally, they tell you go to West Star, go to whatever, whatever.
Well, West Star is Everdy. Uh, it's Everdy, I think it's all Everdy.
Technically, it's all Everdy.
My, my bill says Everdy, if you found me, they should be able to know what's Bonner and what's Everdy.
But if you got a street light that's in the old West Star area, then they go to, uh, Shaw, now they go to the peak, comes out of the peak, you know, but KCBNL, then they come out Shaw in years.
Right.
They have, they're not as consolidated as their name was.
Well, I know that, but mine is, I went West Star and out there, we get a foot going on the old paths there. And that, I don't know, needs some, now there's some statistics, we have it up on, it has to be some consideration on, maybe slow it as we...
Our rhythm.
Congratulations, Jeff, Garrett, and Jeff, Chance, Cheryl. Um, I'm gonna take this opportunity, I know the council members are always very, very good and gracious about, um, praising our department heads and all of our work we do. I will take this moment to express my gratitude for the police in our department, working those fatalities, it's definitely awful. Here on New Year's Eve, we're many of us celebrating, but it's a perfect season on that, so, thank you, everybody. And thanks whoever is taking, well, I got on, what works, because I'm, that's a, we pulled the poll there, so. Exactly.
If, if you have questions, public works, come to me.
Exactly, so.
It's, it's out there.
Pride of it to be like you're...
Yeah, it's out, it's out there being posted, been posted a number of places, uh, for so...
We have hired, uh, assuming that they pass so, uh, you know, one of our public works individuals is going to nursing school. He's going to stay on in the interim twenty, thirty hours a week, so kind of fill in a hard time slot. We have filled that with an individual who is scheduled to start next week. He has, he has direct experience in public work, both with K D O and with, uh, Lanes and things, Lanes. So, I mean, he'll be allowed to apply for a day one kind of deal, you know, it's got one of our streets.
Because now it's gonna be a strain, so.
But, yeah, so it'll be, be that, and then we still have another new position, but we kinda wanna get some of these other, I mean, from a timing standpoint, get these other things set first and, you know, a little bit of time, hopefully the grass gets crazy.
I wanna say thank you to, uh, the three that were brought back to the planning commission. Thank you for their being brought back and been willing to do that. Um, I agree with the roundabout up there, I think that's something for us to make a, a statement, a lot of people will see that. Uh, it'll be the entrance to our city, I don't know what the, um, what we're allowed to do, and Randy, that, there's some things, I mean, if, if it's a fountain or if it's a, I don't know what, what it looks like, uh, what we'll be allowed to do, but there's, I think that, you know, that, in, in Christmas time, that's a nice place. Maybe there are Christmas tree, a big Christmas tree goes out for something, I don't know, but I think that, I totally agree, Jeff, that there needs to be something other than a frog's statue of Mike.
As a, as a...
It was gonna have a cherub, it was gonna have a little cherub with a fountain.
Man, he had an idea of that happening. So.
So let me say how we're, but how we're going to approach that, right? We're not going to include any center, uh.
Yeah, yeah, let's not confuse the name.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to let KODA get done. So when it, when it's finished, you're probably going to see grass.
Well, and I would think that we probably have, um, utilities that will run to that center already, right?
Water line.
Water line, the, you know, for.
Right.
Uh, water and grass.
Yeah, yeah. And we will, and we were talking about, they'll be electric and wa, I mean, access those into the medium.
So if we did decide it, some, to put some sort of fountain, we don't have to go back and start tearing up sidewalk.
We, we are planning that. Just anything we would do in that medium, KODA wouldn't pay for any of it anyways.
Sure, sure. Not what I'm expecting.
And, and just a lot of your grass that, yes.
Scott, the.
Kate, uh, I really don't have anything further to add other than to congratulate you, the folks that have been reelected at Fortin tonight. And thank you all. And we are adjourned.